Thanks you to join me in the pleasure of leaving. My pleasure.
And this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here would like to say something? If so, just give us your name, please.
Peter Arnold. I represent a local community organization in Wiscasset called Repower Wiscasset. And for the last couple of years, we've been trying to figure out how to help a new generator come to Wiscasset because you've got all of this amazing infrastructure. So, I'm sorry.
You can have a seat.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that on your radar as Lincoln County Commissioners, the proposal from Peregrine Turbine Technologies made it to your purview. David made a proposal to the Select Board of Wiscasset last Select Board meeting, so two weeks ago today. And I have a copy of it. And I can certainly give you more electronically. That's 28 pages, you know, almost ran my printer out of ink. But we see this as an opportunity for Wiscasset, but more generally Lincoln County. I'm from Damaskata. To really step forward in electricity generation. David's developed a better turbine. He has his manufacturing now at the airport and his headquarters is just outside Birch Point. And he suggested two things in this proposal. One is to bring a kind of world headquarters for geothermal development and engineering to Birch Point. And also to make as much electricity on a piece of the town's land down by Main Yankee as Main Yankee used to make. So it's a big thing. It's a big proposal. And I just want to make sure it's on your radar. And I would hope that the county would say, yeah, this is a good idea. How can we help? So that's my whole deal. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I've been working at the legislative level who last session passed a bill to look at deep geothermal and hydro power, but I'm interested in the deep geothermal part as a way to help the state make up its energy deficit. We're 50% down now for 2030. Offshore wind got pulled off the table. So we're down. We, the state, is down. And the legislature is really interested in this. So I'm trying to get all parts of government to be as excited as I am. So that's why I'm here. Just wanted to say, please put it on your radar. I think it's a big deal. And if there's a way you can help get interest and excitement and people looking at the proposal, that's what I wanted to put on your table.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter.
And Evan actually has it electronically. He could get it to you or I can get it to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Our finance department. Oh, excuse me. Did I have the minutes?
Moved to approve the October 7th minutes.
Second. Moving seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero in favor. Now, finance.
Alright, so AP warrant 82 in the sum of $264,246.8. Biggest piece of this was our monthly transfer tax to the state of Maine for $217,057.22. Our CMP bill for just over $11,000 and our behavioral health liaison for just over eight.
Move to approve a comparable warrant number 82 for $264,246. Again, I moved and seconded. Any other questions, Melissa? All in favor? Aye. Three to zero in favor.
Payroll warrant number 21 paid on October 17th in the sum of $263,689.21. As you look over on the right-hand side, you'll see that our overtime figure is still over the totality budget for the 112th allocation, or I'm sorry, 126th allocation. But our wages are significantly under budget because of our vacancies. So again, still no concerns entity-wide with where we stand financially for our payroll with that overage.
Give the motion. Yeah, so payroll warrant 2025-21 for $263,689.21.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any question, any other question, Melissa? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero in favor.
And this is just a quick financial statement update through September 30th. You look at the percentages on the right-hand side, you'll see that the there's only one operations department that has made it to that 75% being three-quarters through the year, which is probate. Everybody else is under budget with the exception of our community programs and employee retiree programs and our insurances, because those are all programs that are paid out once a year with the exception of the retiree program. And our transfers out, which is other funding sources for our special revenues and our capital programs. So not a whole lot of concern at this point. As we get closer to the end of the year, I'll start really focusing in on each one of the departments and picking out line items and making sure that our spending is staying on track. So as we get into later November, I'll be looking at an estimation of surplus for talking about our finalizing budget in our.
David, you have questions? No questions. You're in, Burton? Nope. All in favor?
I thought it was no motion.
Yeah, we don't really vote on these. I just wanted to give you an update of where we're. It'd be nice if you guys missed the financial statements more than once a year.
Recorder is pretty good, though.
I've got a phone call.
Maybe, I don't know. You're gonna do pants and stuff there?
I'm getting rid of. I don't wish it.
I always sort of wonder.
It was. She's slamming, listen down no matter what.
I thought she was like, give me some space.
She doesn't want to get fucked in there.
I'll just send you an email.
Always have a thing to play.
Oh, look.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, it looks like our count this morning on Two Bridges is 167. We have 32, 21 from SAG, 23 from NOCS, 49 from Penox Scott, 30 from Waldo, three folks from the Marshal Service and nine from ICE. Yeah, no worries. No questions on the jail count. I have a recommendation that we renew our contract, our facilities use agreement really with Kiev Wawas for our alternative sentencing program. It's in progress right now up at Camp Wawas. This will cover this period in October. This is a budgeted amount for us in the amount of, I think, $2,200. I have a copy. Did you guys, did you get a copy?
We have a copy.
Yeah, I apologize for this being late. Quite frankly, we didn't give it a thought and neither did Kiev until after your last meeting. So this just came through.
Move to approve the Kiev Wawas contract for 2,200.
Second. Moving seconded. Presumably it goes along pretty smoothly.
Yeah, so far the program has been good. I mean, we have had some typical, you know, situations where folks show up where they're to turn themselves in intoxicated. So they end up having to go off to Two Bridges Regional Jail. That happens unfortunately occasionally, that kind of thing. But other than that, they're engaged in some educational programs in the evening. They're doing a bunch of community service work. The chief, chief's behind me and I, we have like, what are our numbers this term, chief?
I don't know the real, the real exact number.
We were pretty close to 50 participants and that may have fluctuated some. It's like I said, at least. So it's working well. In fact, I think there'll be a group up at recycling today helping out clearing some brush and stuff around the recycling center and out back near the tower and stuff later on today.
Great.
Our activities from Lincoln, it seems to be larger the last couple of weeks.
It's larger, but it's still not fantastic. Yes, you're right. Yes.
Because of the way that you have some support for the people in jail.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a, you know, a big, a big part of the program is that alternative to, you know, sending folks out to Two Bridges. Yeah, plus it opens up the educational opportunity, the opportunity for community service work and things like that. So it's kind of a win-win. Wawas is thankful, as you can see, they contribute a great deal to us meal-wise. You know, we do a bunch of work for them, community service-wise there at the camp and around both camps, both Wawas and Kiev as part of their community service work. So it's kind of a win-win that way. So it's worked out well for us for a number of years.
Is it for males only?
No, male, female. Yeah.
It's mixed.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have, we have staff that works from all four counties. They volunteer, you know, not volunteer, but volunteer to work. They're paid while they're there, but they volunteer for shifts and, and things like that. You know, it's minimal staffing, which is good for us. And you know, it's a minimum security situation where, you know, folks sleep in the bunks there and whatnot. So yeah, it's worked well for us over the year.
And you gained success by not seeing people come back.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you track that somehow?
We do. We have, we have a list, you know, at least the folks that come back to our program. You know what I mean? Recidivism is a tough thing to track statewide right now.
Right.
There's just no easy way to do it, short of calling 15 jails to say, you know what I mean? So there's some improvement there. That's a topic for a different day, but there's part of the, part of the gym system that the Department of Corrections and the County Corrections Professional Standards Council has put together is beginning to collect some of that data, which will make it a little bit easier for us. But yeah, and the other big success is the community service work. I mean, these folks are able to give back and it, and it really totals up to thousands of dollars worth of labor. You know, over time, you know, that, and community service work that these folks are able to do around the county. And also, you know, the educational piece, you know, that they have in the evening. Anything from substance use disorder to alcohol, you know what I mean? A variety of educational opportunities similar to that, which, which is helpful as well.
And they're all there voluntarily, right?
They're all there voluntarily.
So you would hope they'd want to engage when they're there.
Yeah, it seems to be, it seems to be pretty well. My, my, our experience has been that it's a little cold the first couple of days until people get in the swing of it and realize that, you know, folks are just here to help and we're all, you know what I mean? And, and usually by the end of, end of the week, folks have warmed up and really are engaged in the educational sessions and things like that. So we've, yeah.
And they get along well together. I guess they must.
For the most part.
There we go.
They haven't had any issues.
Nice, yeah, not twice.
That's right. That's all I have for you this morning. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Pretty light.
Thank you.
You need to take a vote on that.
Oh, the contract, I'm sorry.
We have a motion second for the Kiev contract.
Are you, I didn't hear you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three to zero in favor.
Thank you.
On the smaller amounts of money. Thanks, David.
I'm going to present on behalf of EMA. I've been working on a project with Emily and with Tara at Communications in regards to the Blenheim Tower. We had some Homeland Security grant funds allocated to this tower back in fiscal year 22 that grant will be closing in August and we're trying to wrap it up. One of the things that we've identified is the equipment that we have on the tower could be supplemented by additional equipment that would also support the fire and law channels that we're proposing. So we have the EMS channels functioning there. There are pieces of equipment that we can purchase using these Homeland Security Grant Funds that would help to benefit and offset the costs of the project that we have in our budget.
Within that budget of 22?
And the Homeland Security of 22, yeah. And the total amount is $22,304.2. And that's where a variety of different pieces of equipment that can be purchased and staged in preparation for this project in 2016.
They'd be new equipment or replacement?
It would be replacement equipment.
And yeah, overall is the power good or how?
The Blenheim Tower, we rent space on that tower. We've recently moved to that tower from the other tower that's on Blenheim. The other tower has some pretty high voltage equipment on it and we were getting some interference on it. So we moved to this secondary tower and it's been a much better relationship for us. We've gotten better radio coverage as a result of that.
Well, we own the tower and we rent the, from the land.
We do not own that.
We don't own the tower.
We rent the space. We own the equipment that we put on it.
All right. And the problem from the other one doesn't exist because it's lower frequency or lower voltage?
It's a different arrangement of equipment. So on the former tower, CMP had some pretty high voltage equipment on it. They also had National Weather Service on that tower. And we were getting interference in the radio equipment that we own.
Okay.
So part of this grant was funds to allow us to move to the other tower.
Right.
And we did that back in 2003, I believe it was.
Now, the grant that we opted not to apply for wasn't for this equipment, was it? For what?
That's for 26.
For 26.
And this is a previously approved grant with previous standards and conditions.
I have just a motion to recognize that expenditure of 22, 30402. They'll move.
Seconded.
If there's no questions, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Three to zero in favor.
Next item I have is the unorganized territory budget for fiscal year 27. We're required by the state fiscal administrator of the unorganized territory to present our budget to the state or the UT no later than November 7th. It's a little bit in advance for us, trying to coordinate a budget that doesn't start until next summer based on what we need or we don't know we need yet in this fall. So I reached out to our, the gentleman we use for our contractor that does all of our road grading and he did the bridge approach project for us this past summer. He'll be replacing the culvert later on this fall. And he gave me an estimate for some upcoming items that we need. We need to specifically look at removing tree and brush along the roadway. What's happening is the overgrowth is causing the road to be shaded to a point where the ice doesn't, the ice will form on the road, but then it won't melt in the winter. And we've got a lot of water that is doing damage to the road with all of that greenery on there. So he's got a special piece of equipment that he can run down the side of the roadway. And he's estimating that he'll need a couple of weeks' worth of that with the tree mulcher and the cost is going to be about $18,000. So I've added that as the line under tree and brush removal. And I removed the bridge approach guardrail line from the previous budget because that project is now complete. The approaches have been installed. And Steve is also recommending that we start considering laying down fabric and gravel on the road to help maintain the base of the road and the surface of the road. He's suggesting that we budget for about 400 feet of that to start with and then make that an annual expenditure that we do a section of that road with the fabric and the gravel. So that's where the $24,000 comes from. I estimated on the snow removal and I decreased the Rosenbridge's traditional maintenance line because I don't anticipate needing to spend as much as in previous years. We also get a little bit of money from DOT and that's reflected on the back under the local road assistance of $1,068. So the total budgeted appropriations is $66,150. It's decreased by the road assistance of $1,068 for total assessment. But I'm estimating to be $65,082.
You remind me, it's just a road that we cover?
We.
And how big or how long?
Are responsible for maintaining nine tenths of a mile of Gore Road in Hibbert Score.
Okay. And that serves how many inhabitants?
I believe there's only one person that lives within that area, but people travel from either direction on that road.
And land is owned by, along that road too.
Yeah, it's not just the prop, it's not just the one homeowner. It's multiple other properties in there.
Okay, but without one resident. Yeah, yeah. So if we have a motion, we appreciate it.
Move to approve the UT budget for fiscal year 27.
I'll second that. 66, 150.
Oh, 65, 82.
65, that one, that's a session.
$65,082 total.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
What was 26 budget? That on the back, it said, or?
No, it's a, it's a, remember. $38,560. The challenge that we have with the UT budget is it's unlike the county budget where we can have a capital and we can put money away and show a reserve account for that. We don't have that ability as readily available for the UT budget. So as these expenses go up and down, our budget will fluctuate up and down. Probably back, we had a very high UT budget because we needed to pay for the, the projects related to the bridge.
Strange to be talking about, you're from the little county of Lincoln, unorganized territory. But it's because some counties have a great deal.
Yeah. I know that Franklin County is looking at replacing two different bridges.
Wow.
I think the number's over a million dollars.
And there's a major infrastructure things.
Right, right. And they're major roadways, meaning they're connecting some significant communities. I have on the agenda the IT services contract renewal, but I don't have that contract yet. I communicated with Burgess yesterday. They were still working on that renewal, though I'd like to suggest that we table this until the next meeting.
I have a motion to table.
So move second.
Moving second to the table. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Three to zero in favor.
Thank you. Under old business, we have the Public Safety Building Project. It's, it has not had any significant movement since the last Commissioners Meeting. I did see the contractor that we have at the MMA Convention that I went to in Bangor and we had a pretty lengthy conversation about where we're at and where, where we need to head with this. We did have a follow-up date for him to come out and take a look at some properties, but they had a scheduling challenge. So that got postponed and I'm still waiting for new dates from them. Questions?
No, not today.
No question.
Okay, that's all I have. I do have an executive session. Did you want to give updates on the different organizations?
LCRPC Board met last Wednesday, the 15th. We have two vacancies from Southport. We've got two from, I believe, Jefferson and South Bristol, I believe. Postal County's Workforce Board, I sent them contacts for Katie Hunt to be a business rep from NC Hunt Lumber on that board and as well as a union rep from IMAW District 4, which represents the Machinist Union at Bath Iron Works. Well, it's good for me.
I did attend the last MCCA meeting of note. There is that the president did tell the group that we were meeting in Lincoln County and that having certain events around it and that the administrator was moderately supportive of that. And I explained to the group that, no, that was not the case. We did not decide to host the meeting at that time. So I don't know what has happened in the interim after that was explained to the president, but.
He made a phone call to me.
He did, okay.
To let me know that he still plans on hosting it here, even though we're not the hosts, he'll be hosting it here. He's planning on having a tour of Two Bridges Jail on Tuesday afternoon and then an event at Waters Edge, I believe, restaurant on Tuesday night. And then the MCCA and the risk pool meetings on Wednesday in the conference room at Two Bridges. He has some other. He's got some other initiatives that he's trying to get kick-started and that's kind of the reason why he's wanting to have it here.
But I guess that's okay because we were concerned about staff times. And if he wants to organize it, then, and whatever, you know, seems to make sense.
That's, if he's got the staff to do it, then good for him. I don't know that they'll have all that much luck getting accommodations. Gardens of Glow will be in full swing. So.
That same week?
It's, well, it starts in November. It goes through the end of December. But I'm sure he's thought about that.
True. Okay.
He's nervous.
Yeah. So, and just on the risk pool, and I probably should have asked the sheriff when he was here. It seems like Malcolm is really pushing training and I know the training was at Two Bridges, but his last email sort of suggested that Lincoln County should send more sheriffs and more corrections people. Or at least that was my read of it, so. That we should be sending more sheriffs? That. We said we can send one. Well, that, he would want to see more participation by the Sheriff's Department in corrections because the participation in those. Because the participation in those trainings helps reduce the insurance premiums ultimately. And I'm not sure how many participated the first time around, but. He's made the comments at the last couple of meetings that he really wants every county to. Send all the corrections people and maybe additional deputies as well to the trainings. Well, you know, it is, I'm sure if people can make it, they will go. They're down to just holding a few more. The next one, I think, is in Kennebec County. The, I don't know if we would send somebody to another county for that training or not, but or how many. Did not take it, but that's just something of note that was on the email that came in recently. Carrie, do you know the numbers at all of who?
You don't know the numbers, but I did ask if we sent folks from the sheriff's office to the one at Two Bridges. And I know that at least the command cell attended that.
Yeah. So I'm not sure what he's thinking of, what he needs for numbers or would make it, but he specifically called out Lincoln County and one other, I think. This is Malcolm? Yes. That's no action on that. Just wanted to mention that to folks. So I've moved that we go into executive session for a discussion of personnel under one MRSA four zero five six A.
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero in favor.
Thank you.